...for which it stands, one nation, a country, and indivi... ...who have liberty and justice for all.
We pray for the Savior's blessings with a special guiding hand, might touch the lives this season of all people on this land, so they will know that Christmas is more than just a day, it's formed of love and caring in a very special way. We pray that the Savior's promises might live through things we share, that sparks might start from others, as his people show they care. So Christian love will linger on, long past the day of birth, till others know its meaning all over this great earth. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahasky?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward? City Attorney? Present.
Thank you. First item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public auction to be held at this council meeting of December 19th for the sale of approximately 20.058 acres of city-owned property. Whereas the city attorney ordered a property survey of this property, as more appropriately described, as attached here too. Whereas the common council set the minimum bid of $10,000, with bidding increments of $10,100, and whereas a successful bidder must deposit with the city clerk in the form of a check or cash, 10% of his bid with the balance to be paid to the city clerk's office 30 days from the date of said auction. Whereas the common council reserves the right to reject any and all bids if, in the opinion of the common council or officer in charge, said bid is not in the best interest of the city of Fulton, Mayor Stafford shall conduct the auction, and hereby shall declare the bidding open.
Before we start the bidding, we need to know how many people will be bidding on this property, and please come forward and give your name and address.
Name's Robert Aluzzo. That's A-L-U-Z-Z-O. And the address is 2108 Drummers Court. And that's Baldwinsville, New York. 13027.
Thank you.
Peter Lake, L-A-K-E. 1329 County Route 85, Hannibal, New York.
Dad, excuse me, could you... Peter, could you please give me that a little bit slower?
Sorry. What'd you park? The New York part?
The address.
1329 County Route 85.
Bruce Thorpe, 122 Baldwin Ave., Fulton, New York.
Is there anyone else? We will open the bidding at the minimum bid of $10,000.
Your Honor, could we make sure that the people bidding on this understand that that's zone R1A, that only single-family homes go in there? Okay.
Are you all, all the bidders aware that that is zoned R1A, only single-family homes can go in there? Okay.
I have one question. There, they just have 20.6 acres up with... Is this showing?
Yep. That's what the survey showed, yes.
No, is that... That is basically a landmark, it would be some proxy for our...
There's one strip that comes off the street that we do own that goes with us.
Do we have the map?
There's only access from the street to it.
If, if the three bidders would care to come forward and take a look at the map, so that there's no misinformation.
Do you look in?
Mayor, for the benefit of some of the people, I wonder if we could tell them exactly where the property is?
It's all in the dark lines here. Yeah. Includes this right here, this is 66.25 foot wide strip. It's just the property you're considering. These are all paper streets, they're the streets where the property noses. It's a tract. Would it have been...
It's everything north of the railroad.
Everything. The tracks are here, there's still some land here.
But that entire block is north of the railroad?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing south of it.
Your, your honor?
Yes.
Had something in your mind?
Yep. Once they get this out, I'll have David explain where it is.
Any, to answer questions, or anything like that, we should, should... Surveyors were always showing it over. They'll show this line here. Excuse me. They don't necessarily always show underground, because they...
There's a shore lane that runs down White Avenue, that's pretty...
You saw that? That's now quite on fire, but it's...
No.
Yeah, I understand, I understand there should be no problem accessing the city's water, so... You always have to access it to the main yourself. The city, anywhere it's provided along, along the side of a street, the property owner has to access it themselves. Yep. This, this, this survey was done by the surveyor with the abstract title, so there are a lot of references here, like deep parcel 13, that's from the abstract, deep parcel 5, that's from the abstract. Well, none to my knowledge, an abstract or a survey wouldn't pick that up, I mean, I suppose if a surveyor went out here and did this, and back in here they found a bunch of six barrels, I would think.
Sure?
I haven't personally looked at it. Environmental...
Watched the cords.
We're not, and we're not, we are not giving any guarantees or any representations of the, the way. To my knowledge, there's nothing to problem. It's been basically...
Well, on the hill up there, the city used to own a trash can, and they, they did dump stuff over that hill, like washers, bags, and stuff like that.
So there may be stuff up there. He tried to cut it down. He dealt with it for 10 years. He deserved it. He deserved it. He lost his judgment, George Roy being the judge, he was torn, he had a beard. He said, looking from Kimball, you can see some stuff up on the hill, in the spring.
This preservative here, by...
Is this going? Do you see white stuff on here? No. It's not worth it. It's always... You got it on here.
Something good, barely, like, watch it.
Okay. I don't think anybody on this council is aware of this. Rod, 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 is my name. Now, if it ends up that the property had some significant environmental problems, we can't make any recommendations, by the way.
10, 11, 12.
Yeah. Anything else that maybe didn't get...
That line right there is the trail.
The only problem with that is, wasn't that beside it, there's environmental problems, and environmental, environmental problems, I mean, not with... And that's something that will be a little... I think that's some issue, but also, there wasn't any environmental problems with this. Well, I guess, I guess, I don't feel we're obligated to do that unless we have some reasonable basis to think there are, now that maybe we do. But we can certainly hold this and do that, but it's not the price.
I don't think they have, I think what they did is, they had a teepee burn, they wish, they do stop the hard, that's what they had on the road.
Anybody that's done, done white grates, or that would burn, they could put them around.
That's, that's what I remember as a kid.
Better off, how many years, I don't think they've made it. Not bitter.
I think they stopped that in the 70s, 60s, 70s. Main reason, because the neighbors didn't hear it, went about smoking, so...
T, T, T P, yeah. It's small, it's in the... You want, you're taking a map with these people, go somewhere else, or move the media on, or...
First thing on the agenda was the auction. We're not gonna have the auction, yes, we're not gonna have the auction due to problems, we need to remove it from the agenda, I guess. No, I, I understand that.
The only option we have, nobody bids on it because of that, we're gonna have to order a phase one environmental study, which is gonna cost, you know, the price of $2,000.
There was a Howard family, we leased him.
Yeah, for the Judge Howard, on, on Woodick Road. Yeah.
On the front of the hill, Howard owned the city, right away...
Chris Bruce, who owned the house.
Oh, okay. City owned that hill.
Chris Bruce, who owned the house.
On the backside, here, on the hill, is, uh, a smaller line. Yeah, but just you say that smaller line, the line fence, there. Over here, or line fence, and there's that wireline back here.
I, I heard, Bruce, Bruce, Bruce. I don't know for sure about that, I'm guessing probably one to $3,000, probably around there. Pretty sure that range, I've been involved in some properties, I'm thinking 25, 100 to something like that. I know it's at least a bit. If something is big, it might be, it might be a lot more.
But it's only the one section of it I'm concerned about, but I don't know.
Well, I don't know, if the phase ones, if they go through and take samples all over, I don't...
Oh my God, here they are.
But I think we have to take the position tonight, if somebody's willing to bid on it, we're gonna let them. I don't blame you for your concerns, but, uh... I think you could. We, uh, we might be taking half of it.
How he's going over to ask him how big his lens is.
Actually, they weren't sold up. Paper streets is a rule. As a rule, when they have some paper streets, they're given to each neighborhood, each side. Paper streets are no more than original layout of the city's master...
Well, has everybody seen what they need to see on this? We need to remove this along.
I don't remember any of that, that bridge. We give some, where, outside, south of the... But this is only one of the... Or that railroad. It's supposed to be, yeah, to the river.
How you doing, Bruce?
Okay. What we're even, that stuff in back of your mouth?
Hi, Bruce.
Yeah. Yeah, I know the city property behind it, that's why I was concerned, it break from day one.
Must be a slow news day somewhere.
Yeah. It's gotta be on the news, it's gonna be...
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's right.
I want you to explain to the local audience where this is. The city attorney is going to advise everyone in the audience just where this piece of property that's being auctioned is.
It's in the city. Well, it's in the six word, it's up in the northeast corner of the city. Parcel property that, when we came along, we looked and found that the city owned quite a few parcels here and there that usually, for tax purposes, had been taken by the city over the years, and this was the biggest one. And interest has been generated in this recently by a gentleman who was interested in buying a, a piece of property next to it, that also learned that this property was owned by the city and approached us about possibly purchasing it, that's why we're here tonight. It's off of White Avenue, which is up near Clark Street area, and that's it.
All north, the whole, entire parcel is north of the railroad tracks?
Yep.
Okay. The common council set a minimum bid of $10,000. Do any of the bidders care to open a bid? $10,000. Do you hear 10,100? Mr. Lake. 10,1. Do I hear 10,2? 10,2. 10,3. We have 3. 10,4. We have 10,4. 10,5. 10,500. 10,6. 10,7. This could be a long evening.
Gotta get up like...
10,8. Fine. 11,000. Anytime either of you gentlemen want to break this off, let me know, or go higher. 11,1. 11,2. 11,3.
11,7.
11,7 we have. We have a bid of 11,7. Thank you. 11,8. Do we have 11,9? We have 11,9. Do we have 12,000? We have 11,9. 11,9 twice? 11,9 three times? Sold to Mr. Aluzzo for 11,900. Would you come forward, Mr. Aluzzo, please?
Take that now, I'll give you, uh, I'll get the deed and stuff ready within a couple days. What's the requirement for down?
10% down.
You have to give it to the city clerk? Yes.
Better get the council to vote on this.
Yeah, I gotta...
Okay.
I just gotta...
Could you read the resolution, please?
Be 11,90.
Mayor Stafford has conducted the auction, has declared the auction closed, now therefore be resolved that the bid in the amount of 11,900 is hereby accepted and awarded to Mr. Robert Aluzzo in the amount of 11,900.
Call over there, I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Aluzzo, are you going right back now? Are you going right back to... I'll say, deed right away in a few days, but... It's 2108 Drummers Court, sponsor. Do you use a middle initial? Yep, no problem. That's it, too.
1200 with the balance due by January 19th.
I think I'm on that correct...
Thank you.
The gears on the teacher. Got a little blade up first, hit the gears. Yeah. There goes the budget. There goes the budget. Budget just went down.
That's not Norman. Are we... Good evening, Fulton residents. My staff, the Alderman, and I have invested a considerable number of hours in the preparation of the year 2001 budget. In addition, prior to beginning the budget process, my staff and I entered into contract negotiations with three unions representing the Civil Service Employees Association, police officers, and firefighters. These contracts are very important, as 70% of our budget is expended in wages and benefits for the city employees. Union wage increases can significantly affect a budget. Our goal was to negotiate contracts that will allow us to maintain the level of services we, as Fultonians, have become accustomed to, however, still keeping the services affordable to our residents. In an effort to save the city money, we decided to negotiate the contracts with minimal outside assistance and expense. These negotiations were very complex and a time, and a time-consuming task throughout this year. Because the city was asking for some significant concessions, an impasse was declared with both the CSEA and police officer unions. As a result, a mediator from the New York State Public Employment Relations Board was assigned to help us resolve our differences. The major highlights of these contracts, which affect our budget, include, 1, 3% pay increase for the year 2000, and 3.25% increases for the years 2001 through 2003. Number 2, a cafeteria-style health benefit plan, with all city employees now contributing toward their health care insurance premiums, on an increasing scale through the life of the contracts. 3, to avoid hiring additional personnel, while increasing hours of availability, we increased the hours of city hall employees from 35 to 40 hours a week. As a result, effective January 2nd, 2001, city hall offices will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to better serve the public. No one likes tax increases, myself included. However, with our major revenue sources being sales tax and state aid, with the balance being made up from property taxes, our choices are very limited. While union wages are the largest portion of our budget expenses, contract negotiation and wage increases are necessary to keep the qualified and dedicated city employees we have working for you. Remember, we went to mediation in an effort to keep these costs down. While a reduction of the city's workforce would reduce cost, I do not feel that it is a viable alternative at this time. Our city is moving forward, and a reduction in our city workforce would have an adverse effect on the level of services we provide. In summary, the combination of wage increases and some loss in assessments, offset by some anticipated increases in revenue from sales tax and state aid, equated to the city needing to raise taxes 6.6% to balance the budget for 2001. During the past several months, we have worked very hard and cut $1 million from the original department's request to reduce the increase to this level. With expenses increasing each year, I think it is important to note that since 1997, taxes in the city of Fulton have increased less than 1% overall. The water and sanitation budgets were both balanced without a rate increase for 2001. It also should be noted that through the hard work and dedication of the employees in both of these departments, there has not been a rate increase in over a decade. In 2001, the establishment of a long-needed crew dedicated to repairing catch bases throughout the city will free up our water and sanitation crews, allowing them to address maintenance issues and problems in their respective areas. At this time, I would like to extend my wishes to you and your families for a safe and happy holiday season. I would now ask my executive assistant, John Cruck, to summarize the major points of the 2001 budget. Following John's presentation, we will answer any questions you may have about the budget. At the conclusion of the question-answer period, I will ask the council to pass this budget. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is just, is just go over some of the key increases or decreases, additional expenses, or additional revenues, or revenues we're losing in the budget. Just an overview, and then I'll give a financial impact of how this was prepared, which one was... These are the, the big items that are affecting the proposed budget tonight. We talked about revenues from one year to the next. We're seeing an increase in revenues to the tune of about $200,000. Those revenues come in the form of additional sales tax. Our sales tax this year, we anticipate coming in about $100,000 more than we budgeted. So, this is a pretty realistic number, with some additional things that we see coming into town. Hopefully, the impact of the sale of the Miller Brewing Company property will, will help our sales tax number. Our state aid, we're looking at, at an increase in state aid as a result of the mayor going to conferences, talking to our state officials, we're looking for another $157,000 in state aid. One of our revenue sources that we are losing, we're losing $135,000 from our pilot agreements. This is primarily the hydro's. If you remember, I think it was back in 1998, we negotiated with Niagara Mohawk a pilot reduction. They felt that the hydro's were over-assessed, we agreed, and this is part of the pilot agreement this year, we're losing $135,000 in revenues as a result of that. Other miscellaneous revenues came to about $28,000. So the total in increased revenues is $200,000. The changes in expenses, these are the key things that are in the budget that will, will change the expenses, for the most part, increasing expenses. In wages, $440,000 in wages. This is over a two-year, for the year 2000 and 2001, we're gonna experience a $440,000 increase. This is from settling the contracts that the mayor mentioned we went to mediation on. This is, the mayor also mentioned, a masonry crew. We have additional people in there for a masonry crew, and one additional person for the recreation department. Fuel, everybody has experienced the increase in fuel with gas pumps, so has the city. Fuel for police cars, no plows, our city vehicles, we're anticipating spending $35,000 more next year. Liability insurance is going up, our carrier gave us a quote on that, to the $220,000. Library is looking for some additional monies. We wanted to put more into street maintenance and sidewalks. We had additional monies in here, but when we saw how much expense there was, we cut it back. People are constantly calling us, wanting their sidewalks repaired, it's something that people can see done for their tax dollars. What we would like to do is increase this budget about $10,000 every year. Seen the results of sidewalk repair in our city, we get a lot of favorable comments about that. Miscellaneous equipment, materials and equipment, this would be the materials required for the masonry crew. We're gonna need cement, cement mixers, those types of things. Some of the things that we have reduced our expenses, we reduced our contingency by $75,000. In the year 2000, we had $275,000 in our contingency, and 2001, we have $200,000 in there. So we're seeing $75,000 reduction, hopefully we won't have the big items that hit us this year, such as the McCall's. We took out the city engineer. In the 2000 budget, we said we would like a city engineer. What we have found is that when you try to hire an engineer, you get a specific engineer with a specific expertise. It's better to go to an engineering firm where you may need different expertise, an electrical, a civil. So, we've elected to not hire a city engineer, and... So we've elected to not hire a city engineer and reduce our budget. Bond indebtedness, one of the things that the mayor, when he campaigned, campaigned on, was to reduce bond indebtedness. We're reducing it $30,000 this year, and we've come up with a plan that in the next five or six years, our expense of bond indebtedness, this year is over a million dollars. We pay for debt, unspoken interest. We want to, in the next five to six years, reduce that to $200,000, without taking any short-term debt to long-term. Miscellaneous expense came to $28,000, for a total of increased expense of $421,000. And these are the key areas that we got that $421,000 from. If you look at the change in expense and the increased revenues, we have a shortfall in this budget of $218,000, which we have to get from a tax increase to balance the Let me explain a little bit about what that means. The homeowner, tax effect, $218,000 increase. Our $2,000 cost per thousand on the tax rate is $12.41. We're looking in this proposed budget, that being $13.23 per thousand. That's an increase of about 82 cents for every thousand dollars that your house is assessed. That equates to the 6.6 percent increase that the mayor was talking about. Impact of the average homeowner. The average home in the city of Fulton is assessed for $61,000. Remember that our rates are in per thousand. Divided by 1,000, times the 82 cents is $50 a year for the average homeowner. That's where some pay taxes, a dollar, that's where we got those numbers, taking the average assessment.
Before we go into questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll answer the questions during the public hearing. The purpose of this hearing, which is required by law, is an effort of the city of Fulton to provide all citizens, senior citizens, and representative organizations, and all other interested citizens, an opportunity to be heard on a proposed general budget and to express their opinions regarding the proposed 2001 budget. Hearing this, I will declare the public hearing open for the expression of opinions and to answer any questions that anyone may have. Public hearing is now open. Those who care to speak on this, please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
My name is Darrell Heaton, 1215 Bayside. Engineering, okay, that's gone up pretty good. I understand you need more engineering, because who you have now evidently goes out and watches the guy cut trees and plant trees. So we really don't have an engineer in City Hall, the way it looks to me. And you do have, explain it to me.
We do not have a city engineer. We have an engineering helper that is a civil service position in the engineering department, but that's all we have right now.
Okay, but you would think that we have somebody in engineering, that somebody that worked maybe in city garage could go out with them when they cut trees and watch that, take care of that situation, rather than tie him up, blowing out, cutting trees and planting trees. But from what I see, that's where we're spending our money on that gentleman right now.
He also goes out with the water and sanitation department and keeps the maps up whenever they're on projects, to update all our projects, and the map-wise, to keep all that information so that we have it, and we don't get surprises when we start digging.
I just had a discussion with him. He was planting trees underneath telephone wires, maple trees. He said they only grow 25, 30 foot. Well, the wires are only 12 foot high. And I wasn't contacted on that they were even planting trees, but they dug up the lawn, it looks terrible right now, and knowing the situation, well, next year, maybe we can get to it, but it's not there for three or four weeks, nobody did anything to it.
That was a contractor that came in and did that, and that is part of a program that is being funded partially by Niagara Mohawk.
Okay, the contingency. I see that on the contingency, we said we cut it, but if you look at 1999, we went from $21,000, and now we're cutting back, but we're still losing $178,000 if my math
Darrell, did somebody put a tree in front of your house? Don't you remember that business that we were putting money into, telephone wire?
It was $21,516 back in 1999. In 2000, it was $2,750, $295. So we cut back to 2,000, but it's still an increase from 1999, $178,000. How come we were such a jump from 1999 to anywhere in the book, you really voted and you cut back, so I mean, still.
Well, we had to have the money in there for the 2000 budget, because we had pending contract negotiations with all three unions. And that's why we needed the money in there for that. What we also found out is why we have the $200,000 for this coming year. One of the things that was thrust upon us this year was we had to purchase this 66 South First Street building and demolish it. The purchase price was $90,000. The demolition price was over $20,000. All you need is a couple of projects like that, and your contingency is gone. That is the problem.
Okay, it might have been created before you, but I understand there was a problem with the wall, that's why you had to do that.
That's right. And unfortunately, things tend to surface that have been done many years ago that all of a sudden become problems, and we have to be able to take care of those problems as they surface.
Okay, and one other thing on this. I see that actual spending has gone up over 7 percent, even though it says 6.8 something. The actual spending, I can figure, is actually over 7 percent, if anybody sits down and figures it out, even though the taxes may not be raised that high. If you go by last years and 2001, that's the actual spending, if you sit down and figure out, you're mad.
Yes.
One other thing. I'm closing my business thanks to the city of Fulton. That's one part of it. I just wanted to say that I hope whoever opens a small business in the city of Fulton will get better cooperation than I got in the last five years. And there's other people that get the same cooperation. So I hope at some point, somebody works with business. Because when we're saying we're going to raise sales tax, there's three businesses right there in that mall closing, and I don't know how we're going to raise sales tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on the budget, or have any questions concerning the budget?
Tim Allen, 408 South 7th Street. I have a couple of questions. On the contingency, regarding the contingency?
Yes.
And you've just had something happen this year that you never expected.
Right. But the reason that last year's contingency was as high as it was, is we had unfunded contracts coming up, the negotiations, and we put the money in the contingency to pay for the increases that would be negotiated. We now have negotiated contracts and don't have to go into the contingency to pay those in 2001.
Compared to this contingency that was here, you see an actual projection of wages.
All right, and the engineer?
That's why we were able to.
You're lowering the engineer by 48,000.
Yes.
We're not going to hire a city engineer. We took the position. But you're going to hire a service. You're going to hire a service?
As we need it.
As you need it.
If a project comes up where we need engineering services, we will hire out the engineering services, rather than have someone on staff.
Will that money come from the contingency, or?
There is money in there for outside, in the budget. This was just a position. There's always been money in that budget for outside consultation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. You too, Bob.
Every year, every year.
I don't have any questions, but I have a statement, if you will allow me to bring it around to the point that I want to finally make in the end. I'm not going to pick apart the budget, and I'm not going to pick on any one particular item that you gentlemen are asking for more money to cover. But I'm going to ask some rhetorical questions. You said that you went to some other cities to ask them about their payroll and their salaries, so that you can bring up our people to that same level. I don't know what the cities were, Auburn, Rochester, Syracuse, Watertown, Messina, who knows? But they're not Fulton. Now I want to know, when you went to ask them about salaries, did you ask them about the ratio of police and firemen per capita? Did you ask them about their tax base, their school tax base, their property taxes? Did you ask them about their retail income, retail sales taxes? Did you ask them about their existing industry? Did you ask them about manufacturers, jobs, unemployment? Before we raise our salaries to match these other cities, do we justify having this kind of an income to our people if we're not making that kind of an income to justify it? In other words, are we bringing in enough money into this city to justify it? I'm here 35 years. 35 years ago, we had over a dozen factories in this city. I'm not going to name them, you should sit down and think about it, and maybe you might get that into your mind, as to what we used to have and what we've got now. We're down to two factories, Nestle's and Sealrite. And we're begging them not to take their ball and go home. And we'll give them anything. You want a street, we'll give you a street. If Broadway's in the way, we'll close it. Please don't go home. And the local managers are good residential people, they live here, they're neighbors, but decisions aren't made at the local level. They're made from corporations out of the state. When the bottom line doesn't give them what they want, they're closing. So what we have to do is start looking for some industry. Miller doesn't impress me at all. Volun gets the taxes, it does nothing for Fulton. And the fact that we have downtown vacated, with the exception of a professional park, you might laugh at the Dizzy Block, but I remember the Dizzy Block being a very, very active downtown. Traffic was unbearable. Every single store was operating. We're down to a professional park, doctors, lawyers, chiropractors, which are okay, but they don't pay sales tax. We need to bring in retail. You're making a big issue over Wilson Farms, big deal. I don't care one way or another if they go in there, they're going to hire three people. And the three people are going to come from Burger King, McDonald's, and Arby's. So you're not going to gain anything. We don't need three employees, we need 300 employees. Nestle's bought up property because they needed parking. Three shifts going full-time. We don't hear the sirens blowing anymore, shift changes. And the parking lot is half-full because the people have been cut down. Departments have been closed. We have to do something before we give ourselves all these raises in payroll to justify it. 70 percent of the budget is payroll, which is absolutely ridiculous. Who is paying the other 30 percent? Without getting into the charts, we might have 5,000 homes in Fulton. Take away the tax-free, tax-exempt properties, federal, state, county, and city. Take away all the churches, take away all the social clubs, take away all the veterans who are getting tax-exempt. What's left? A handful of people. And out of that handful of people, half of them are seniors, paying for school taxes without having kids in the school. So who's going to pay for all this? We're down to four industries in this county. Oswego County, the largest employer, Oswego County Opportunities, 18 million a year business with an $8 million payroll, that's two. Three is our $40 million school system, country club in itself. People are waiting online to work for the Fulton School System. It pays well. Now we're going to have to add a fourth industry to that, the city of Fulton. What's left? We have the king and his court sitting in a castle, and you've got the people from the school system as part of your guests, living in your castle. And on the other side of the moat, we have welfare and fast foods. That's our choice. So who's making all the money, and who's paying for all of it? I think it's absolutely ridiculous. Now, when you can justify your raises and justify the income and the payroll by saying to me, "Look at the income we've got coming in," I'll say, "Go for it." But I was told $4.5 million in sales taxes is coming next year. From where? And one more thing. Well, there'd be more than one more thing. We're allowing people to open residence to business. They're turning their homes into residence, I mean, into businesses. We have empty stores downtown. We should be forcing the people to open their retail in those empty stores, instead of turning residential homes into businesses. Force them downtown. Another thing. We have this here thing built on Pollution Lake, and it's going to have a souvenir shop. It's going to sell cups, coffee cups, with Fulton on it. Can you tell me who's going to come from Cape Cod and Virginia Beach to buy a cup that says Fulton? Where is Fulton? That money should have been put into, my own personal complaint, sewer systems. But I was told it was a grant. Senator Wright gave us the money. It's not from the taxpayer. Well, did it come from Senator Wright's personal checking account? Well, he gives me $50,000 from this checking account, I'll say it's not tax money. But that's tax money from the pork barrel, regardless who put it in there. So we should have gotten a grant for our dilapidated sewer system, and I wouldn't have had what I had last week. Now you can't tell me that we don't have sanitary sewer problems. John Lincoln, was I to your home on 1st Street for backed-up sewer?
Yes, you were.
How long did the smell linger in your cellar?
Ten lingers.
Twice. And your house on Chestnut and Dennisay?
Yep.
I was there, what, three times?
At least.
Backed-up sewers.
Right.
And Mr. Weston has backed-up sewers in his house on 3rd Street at one time. The people before you had it six times. I've been in this city for 40 years unplugging sewers. Don't tell me that the problem is just storm sewers. It's sanitary sewers. I had, excuse me, crap in my cellar, not rainwater, 14 inches of it. And if the code enforcement was out there telling these people to put in grease traps, we wouldn't have half the problems we've got. Manes are backing up in this city. Some of them are as much as 80 and 100 years old. We should be putting that money into the sewer system. And then we won't be paying people for washers and dryers and all the losses that they've had from backed-up cellars. They're out there. I know they're out there. And as far as downtown, before I forget, I'd like to know who the insane person is that is pushing a 481 bypass around our downtown. We're trying to get businesses downtown, and we're talking about bypassing 481 so the customers can get to Oswego and North Syracuse faster. You want to know why I think it's stupid? One word: Phoenix. As soon as 481 went around Phoenix, they killed that village. I sat outside a doctor's office, and there were eight stores. One had a pizza shop, one had a part-time tanning lotion salon, and the other six were empty. That's what you'll do in Fulton with a 481 bypass, like we don't have enough trouble already. So what I want us to do is to quit fooling around with this operation of Oswego County, who the only jobs they found were for themselves. You gave them $10,000 for their payroll, they could have went into the sewer out front of my house. What did they do for the 10 grand? I don't see very much being done, except for a couple of fast food joints. $5 an hour ain't going to do it, gentlemen. We need $15 an hour. We need fifteen dollars an hour, we need three and four hundred dollar jobs, not these little minimum wage places. So stop worrying about Wilson Farms, because the guy's only going to sell two-dollar gallons of milk after the supermarkets close anyway, so who cares? And you're worrying about the gasoline pumps? We have an ethylene manufacturer going in at Miller's. You've got five acres of gasoline going out there, nobody's worrying about that. So let's get real. Let's get real, you're going to have a bunch of field people out here angry with the lords that are living on the hill. And I'm a little tired of living in a place that has nothing to boast about but fast foods and welfare. Because I'm not part of the four big industries in this county. You can take all the raises you want, justify it to me, and tell me that our income will cover and justify your payroll that's going out of this place. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak on it?
Jeff Cab, 317 South Fourth. I just hope that everybody takes and listens to what he just said. I was born and raised in Fulton, the old Fulton Hospital, I'm forty-four years old, I've been here all my life. And I think he explained everything about as good as it needed to be heard. And I just want to add one thing. I think that if it's possible, with our high-dollar pumpers, our American La France fire trucks, I really don't think that we need to have them on the street when they're not needed to go to motor vehicle accident. With the heavy-salted roads and stuff that, like I said, it just isn't needed. We got rescue for that, we don't need our pumpers out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Fran Foley, State Street, Fulton. I have some concern about the health benefits. It's such, it's one of our highest costs that we have. And I don't think the employees are paying, I know you have negotiated a lot on them, but they're only paying about five percent.
This, the year 2001, it will be five percent a premium, that was this first year that they have paid anything.
Which was only about fifty dollars a month for an employee, bet about right?
Yeah, in that neighborhood.
Anyway, it isn't very much. Myself, on Medicare, we pay fifty dollars a month, and that's on a frozen, not very high salary. So that's one of the things I think that somehow that could be negotiated so that we can have them pay more, a fair share, and that isn't a fair share, five percent.
No, but it is an entry level, we were lucky to get that.
I know, but I don't know how else you're going to be able to do it.
In the future, in the future, the reality is going to have to set in.
And another item is sick pay. Now, is their sick pay accumulated?
The unions?
Yes.
It depends, it depends on the union. They negotiate that.
Okay, so that. All the employees don't, it isn't the same thing for like each?
No, each one is different.
Because we don't want to be in this situation like Oswego is, where their sick pay is accumulated, and when they quit or retire, they're getting about forty-six thousand dollars in sick pay that they didn't use. Now, sick pay is wonderful, you need it, you have to have it. And you have to have a accumulation where you do get a major sickness to cover it. But, it should be limited, so that it doesn't go into this amount like that. And if you don't use it all over a minimum or maximum number, you just don't have it, you don't, you lose it.
This, uh...
Because if you're not sick, that's good.
Yes, it is, definitely, I agree. The, without seeing the contracts that these people went out under in Oswego, I can't say for sure, but I can almost assure you that our sick pay program that's in the contract is definitely different from Oswego's.
I really wish you would look into that to be sure then. Because that involves a great deal of money when you have several people retiring and accumulate that money.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that cares to speak?
What I want to speak about is the raises for the department heads?
Yes.
Okay, and I wrote this down, so you just let me read it.
Sure.
A great book starts out by saying that it was the best of times and it was the worst of times. And for Fulton, I guess that saying, that saying pretty much tells us where we're at. This budget, and those that are followed, do say that it is the best of times. Is it? Having served this city as an employee and as an alderman, with a sixth ward, I know that the budget, that budgets are most made up of actual figures, and I am sorry to say, projected figures. Naturally, the actual figures come from personnel. What you need to provide services like police, fire, and public works, with payroll, insurance, vacations, et cetera, being the major expenses. The projected figures are made up based on things like sales tax, growth in industry, and other projections that you all will have. The problem that I have with this budget is that you're giving the taxpayers of Fulton an expense, these raises, the department heads. They'll be with us forever. And good times are bad. Can this council justify increases based on inequities that have nothing to do with Fulton, but are based on what other people in similar positions in other cities are being paid? Taxpayers of Fulton should not be responsible for the economy or of negotiations in other cities. Before you pass this budget, I hope that each and every one of you on this council will ask yourself this question. How do we pay for these bills in the worst of times? Thank you.
Thank you. And just to give you a little bit of information, there were some of the department heads that did receive large increases over the life of their agreements. Fourteen percent of that increase was the increase of increasing their hours from thirty-five to forty hours that their individual departments went up. Instead of hiring new people. We don't have department heads that are not working department heads. I have never seen it forty hours for, for the offices here.
It's always thirty-five since I've been here, I've been here sixteen years.
It's been, it's been, and what the different offices were saying is they needed more people to get the work done. Instead of hiring more employees and paying more fringe benefits, we increased the hours of the city departments that were on thirty-five to forty hours. But when you do that, you increase each person's salary by fourteen percent without any raises. It's a fourteen percent change from thirty-five to forty. But, you reduce overtime that way, and you don't have to hire new people and pay the full benefits with retirement and everything else by doing it. We thought this was the cheapest way of getting more work done and opening the offices longer for the ease of the public.
So this had nothing to do with other cities or what they were compared?
They, the council asked to have a study done as to what the other cities were paying. We got information from the Conference of Mayors as to what the other cities in the state, I believe it was based on a 1999 study, and took information out of that in upstate cities of approximately the same size. And gave them that information. But, as they said, fourteen percent of this is based on increasing their hours. If their offices are going to be open, they're on straight salary, they don't get overtime. Fourteen percent of that, the other increase is based on the same percentages the unions got over the life of the contract. So, that's, that's where the raises came from. For those that had their hours increased, their salaries increased. Is there, are there any other questions?
I'd like to ask a question. You have a masonry crew coming in, you said, right?
Yes.
And they're going to repair the storm drain grates?
The catch basins, yes.
Which is a good thing, because we've had sawhorses and traffic cones on some things, they were dangerous. That's excellent. I had two put in on the corner of State and Third, two years ago. My neighbor up the street was complaining about water, they paved it and put the water in front of my house. The water never reaches those two storm drains. What I said to you once, and it's the only way I can explain it, to make it clear. You're going out and buying one hundred and fifty dollar lampshades with no light bulb in the lamp. It looks pretty, but it doesn't work. They have to do more than fix the grates, they've got to get down into the sewers.
Right.
Where they're broken.
Right, but right now, we don't have a crew that's doing this. So the crew that gets down in the sewers are the ones that are fixing, they've got to take the time to fix it.
As far as I'm concerned, they should get the forty percent raise, and the desk jockeys should get the three percent. Because the water and sewer department are out there in sub-zero temperatures, the mud and ditches.
They certainly are.
But, there's a broken sewer on Fulton Leach in front of my parents' home, it's been broken since I moved here thirty-five years ago. It's still broken.
Not, not to argue with you, but I just checked with Roger Parsons, he checked with his crew, they fixed that last year.
They did repair it?
Yes, they did.
Thank God.
Okay.
I applaud him.
If you report problems to me, Al, I'll pass them on and we'll get them fixed.
We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar truck that we bought. Beautiful chrome and stainless steel.
Yes.
It's supposed to go up to five hundred feet in cleaning capacity.
Yes.
That truck should be out every month or every six months in each ward doing maintenance. Preventive maintenance. If they know where the bad sewers are, and a bunch of plumbers in this city can tell you where they are. They should be out doing those first and then servicing the rest of the mains. We have the equipment, we should be using it. And I can tell you, there are three in my ward alone that need cleaning.
And we haven't had the manpower to do it. By putting this crew on to take care of the one project, then the people that are supposed to be doing that can do it. That's why we're doing it.
And which crew will that be?
The water and sanitation crew.
Mr. Parsons said he's under manned now.
Well, he's, that's why we're putting the crew on.
Hiring men that are going to get down and fix the sewers, not just the grates.
Right, the, the crew we're putting on is going to do the concrete work, which will allow the people that have been doing that now, along with everything else, to concentrate on maintenance and repairs.
And let me say, if you give yourself increases, it's okay with me, provided you can show me where you can afford it, one. Two, don't cut our services. We don't want to give you more money and get less service.
I don't want to cut services at all.
Example, Thursday, I watched the trash truck go by, and watched the man go through my trash. I don't live in Beverly Hills, so we don't have to be picking and choosing what trash they're going to take. I watched the gentleman, he picked up a flower and he put it back and started to walk away, and I went out and I said, "What are you doing?" He says, "We don't take plastic flowers." I said, "Put the plastic flower in the trash and take the collectibles." He says, "Where are they?" I said, "They're under that white stuff, it's called snow." And I dug down and took out two bags of cans and bottles. He took them and threw them into the truck because he was angry. I made him do something he's getting paid for. At size, he's getting a raise now to do that. So, don't pick and choose, like you can pick up, it's trash, it's garbage, it's recyclable, I don't care what it is. Trash is trash.
But we have different trucks to pick up.
Yeah, four of them.
Pick up different items.
Four of them.
But what I'm saying is, the truck that's out getting recyclables doesn't pick up the trash because you can't mix it.
Exactly, that's a different truck.
Right, that's why...
And Yard Waste is another truck.
We have to do that differently.
Newspaper is another truck. The guy that tars the street drives up and down in a snowstorm, he's out taring streets, I don't know where. And then the guy that drives by my branches that sit down out there for two weeks, he's not stopping to pick it up. Don't cut my services if you want more money. Give us more services and we'll give you everything you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on the council that would care to speak on the budget?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask John, if he, the way the budget is right now, John, if you took the salaries, the contractual salaries are there, they're always there, they've been there since day one. Two of those units are governed by binding arbitration, so there's not too much we can do there. But, as far as department head salaries and elected officials, if those salaries come into line, say with the three percent that the unions got, what difference would it make in that budget? Do you have some kind of an idea there?
I have to put a pencil to Ron. I think we're pretty close based on the fourteen percent, we had the three percent. I don't think anybody got any windfall of money of others.
No, 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 I understand that, John, the only thing...
What effect it would have on the budget?
Yeah, I wanted to know what effect it would have on the budget, and although it sounds like comparing apples to oranges, most of us that are sitting here come from the private sector. And, and I'm a salaried supervisor, and I have a lot of people that work for me that make more money than me because they work more hours, and that doesn't bother me one bit. Do we really have to say to our department heads, "You got to work five extra hours a week because your employees are"? I mean, we can trust these people here to be here another hour a day without a department head? I'm not offended because my people, my, my men work more hours than me and make more. It doesn't offend me one bit, and the thing if it is, the private sector's paying for this.
If the department heads were not doing anything but pure supervision, I would say, yes, that would be a waste. But they're not. Every department we, department head we have is a working department head that gets right in with everybody else in their department and works hard to get the job done.
John, what'd you think, I mean, using rough numbers?
Well, I understand, Mike, with the, with the hourly league, because when they get a three percent raise, when they work more hours, you get paid, you know. We have the same thing.
To answer Ron's question, what'd you think, department heads roughly fifty, admin another fifteen, so sixty-five from two eighteen is about a quarter of it? So, seven percent, a quarter of that would be, without those increases, Ron, you'd be looking at five percent instead of seven? I mean, using rough numbers.
We looked at the impact of mayor and council salary increase and department head increase. The department head total increase is about one percent of the six point six. The council and mayor was about half a percent, so you're right.
Well, I'm not proposing, take the, I'm not proposing not giving them a raise, right? The only thing I say is that...
The department has got no raise, this number would be five point six.
Yeah. I know the council, some of you guys take your perceptions of everything, but people, people that are out in the manufacturing sector, both hourly and salary, are getting around two point eight, three percent. I mean, that's, that's the standard. And what I've heard, and for some reason, they don't come to public hearings, I don't know why, because I've heard a lot about this. But, they're paying for it. And it's hard to understand why it would be, the employees, which they consider us employees, me, Chamberlain, the city clerk, the mayor, they consider us are their employees. And, and the way it's put to me is, why does the employee get more than the boss, you know what I mean, the employer? And I can understand that, I can relate to that.
If you look at this four hundred and forty thousand, the biggest portion of this is not the mayor's salary.
John, I know where the bulk of the money comes, and I'm not pointing a finger that way at all. And I also understand that the council and the mayor, when you looked at a seventy-three percent increase over a three-year period, was a very small... percent increase over a three-year period, was a very small dollar figure compared to other increases. But when you put a percentage to something, you can dramatize it.
Anybody can make numbers work. Seventy-three percent over three years, yeah, that's true. But council and the mayor haven't had a raise ten years. And this would be over a thirteen-year period, so it's a lot less than seventy-three.
I understand that.
And that dollar amount was sixteen thousand dollars of that four-hundred-and-forty.
But what I've seen is perception is a lie to the public. I mean, the people are out there, and they're looking and saying, "Jesus, what we're getting, and this is what's happening." Even if it's a... You know, if it only come down to five percent, I mean, I think we should look at it. Of course, Mike's saying that his department heads are working department heads, so if he's got hourly people here out doing stuff in the clerk's office, in the Chamberlain's office, he's gonna have his department heads doing the same thing. Basically.
Ron, another thing. Anytime someone in the city retires, we really scrutinize that position to see if we can combine some things. We've done it with code when we're looking at the city engineer. We're reducing the number of people and asking the people that are here to do more.
But I understand. I know that. I'm not saying we don't have dedicated employees.
You know, the sound industry does.
Yeah, I know. But I also know we look at what we need and what we don't need. And I think we, when we go to the conference of mayors, again, we ought to be looking at everything we're doing in this city and see if we need to be doing it. See if there's overlap of services or if we're competing with the private sector on things. And if we are, then we need to do something about it.
In some areas, we shouldn't be competing with the private sector, because we could do it cheaper. Sidewalks is a huge example of that. It doesn't take an engineer to slap a concrete down. We could hire a couple of guys, do it a lot cheaper, and save a lot of money. I mean, that's one thing that we've looked at. I know that hopefully that'll happen somewhere in the future, but...
Well, I'll tell you this. I've seen sidewalk crews come and go over the years here, and you could never come anywhere close to getting the volume of sidewalks done with a crew unless you hired another thirty people. And once you do that...
They don't have a huge crew doing these sidewalks. They're a big contractor doing it. Not a huge crew.
Come on, how many have they got?
They had quite a few out this year.
They have a lot. They have a lot of them doing it, and once you hire people, then you've got benefits and raises, and you're there forever. And it's very hard to lay people off. I mean, that's the reality of it, and that's what we're looking at here. The only place it happens is in industry, in the private sector. You see the jobs cut. I mean, there are certain things I shouldn't even be talking about, but when I look at where I work, which is Nestle's, and the bottom line in that industry and any industry, when they need to make up the bottom line, they do it with jobs, and jobs that pay good enough to buy a home or a car or vehicle. We get a little tax increase here. We did this power-for-job thing, which was the greatest thing on earth, and next year, with all the foolishness and monkeying around that they've done to save money, our power bill's gonna be almost a million dollars more. So, now we'll add another seven or eight thousand dollars in taxes, a hundred thousand dollars in a water bill. The parking lot's gonna get emptier. And these are people that are buying homes to pay these taxes. I'm one of them. So, whether it's one percent or two percent, it's a lot. It's a lot. It really is. And that's just us. I don't know what it's doing to Dean Foods. I don't know what it's doing to Sale Right. Of course, some of them have site pilot agreements, so it don't affect them. But the straw's breaking the camel's back. You know what I'm saying?
I may not be able to... I may not be keen of me to disclose this, but while sitting in this executive sessions, it's very frustrating, and I understand there's a lot of negotiation that has to go along with the union, but it's very frustrating. I'm not pointing fingers here at the council, but it's frustrating. I'm pointing at the state that we hear that arbitrators are gonna come in, they're gonna make a decision, and really stick it up our butt as taxpayers as to what we can pay or can't pay a city employee. Very frustrating situation, and that's where these numbers are coming from.
That's a fact. It affects the money.
That's where they're coming from. And when we can't say, "No, we only wanna give a one or two percent pay increase," and, "No, an arbitrator's gonna come in here, and he's gonna force a three-and-a-half percent increase down your throat, and you're gonna like it," that's a very frustrating situation.
That's right.
And that's what burns my butt as a taxpayer.
It is, and it happens.
And I'm a taxpayer sitting on this council, just like anybody sitting out in the council or in the assembly here. And it is very frustrating. I know exactly where they're coming from when it comes right down to that's involved.
No, I think the mayor did a good job with the unions.
The mayor, I thought you were now...
He did a great job.
Excellent job negotiating with these contracts and with these unions. They really... I don't even wanna say what unions, but they tried to stick it to us big time. Okay? And I'll tell you right now, we're lucky to get what we're getting out of the budget right now.
Yeah.
As a taxpayer, you're lucky you're getting it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The masonry crew that you're talking about, they're gonna do sidewalks, and their salaries are included in wages, and their materials are included in materials and equipment. Are we gonna see a decrease in the paving budget? Because historically, I've taken the sidewalk money from paving.
Right.
This concrete crew is gonna work... Be designated to work on catch basins until all the catch basins are repaired.
Okay. So, when I give you my list of two-hundred-and-fifty more sidewalk slabs, they're not gonna do it? It's still gonna come out of the paving budget.
They're not gonna be able to do it.
Until we can get the catch basins done. If we can get the catch basins caught up, then they will have the expertise to work on the sidewalks.
One thing you have to look at, going back to what Ron said. Last year, we paid a hundred-and-eighty dollars a slab for a sidewalk. That was double from the year before.
Now, when it gets to the point where we can do it cheaper, then we ought to look at doing that.
Well, that's exactly what I was saying earlier. It's almost to the point right now where it's not... They're not competitive when they bid for these sidewalks. It's getting almost close to the point where it'd be cheaper to find either somebody else or do it ourselves.
We have to look at that.
One of the things we're getting bids out earlier, whatever it takes, whatever, you know?
That would help, yeah. We look at, even when I was on the council, what did everybody pick up? Privatizing that, letting each homeowner pay for their own. But when we put a pencil to it, found out that the city can do it cheaper than somebody who comes in, and at least the residents have control over that cost rather than somebody from the outside coming in and costing them up exorbitantly. At least we have control over it now. People can come and express their opinions. Thank you, guys, for that. That's our trip. Anyone else?
I just had a gentleman call me earlier this evening. His concern was pretty much what has been expressed tonight. He was asking about the salaries as to making sure that our salaries were being compared to municipalities that were very much like ours and with similar situations. And he also was concerned about us looking at the median income in the city of Fulton and using that as somewhat of a barometer also. So, he just wanted me to share that with the council.
See, the thing is, you go right back to falling back into arbitration with the state, and the state mandating what you're gonna pay, what you're not gonna pay. The state has roadblocked this city from making advancements and progress since at least I've been on this council. We tried to come up... Look at the program, the pilot program we've tried to come up with for, you know, buying some of the multi-unit properties, converting them back to single families and given tax breaks, and the state steps in our way and roadblocks. Another example...
The governor just vetoed legislation on that and sent it back to the sponsor to work with one of the state departments, because he said, "Did you see that was technically flawed or something like that?" And he sounded in his veto message as if they worked the flaws out of this, that he is definitely in favor and will sign the legislation. So, they are working to do that. That's one of the agenda items for the conference of mayors. Anyone else? If there's no other input, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
I'll say...
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Whereas a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year commencing January 1, 2001, making appropriations for the conduct of city government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees subject to negotiations as noted on the salary schedule is attached hereto in the budget packet. Whereas the governing board has met and considered the tentative budget, has conducted a public hearing thereon as required by the city charter, now therefore be a resolve that the tentative budget is amended and revised and is in hereafter set forth, is hereby adopted, and that the several amounts for the objects and purposes specified in the salaries and wages subject to negotiations and Schedule II of that budget shall be and hereby are fixed at the amount shown therein effective January 1, 2001.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the two.
No, I didn't hear it.
Holdman, what was opposed?
I was a negative.
You were? Okay.
Make it a one.
Yes. Four to two vote. Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolution directing the tax levy of the city of Fulton for the year 2001. Whereas the common council of the city of Fulton has heretofore adopted the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2001 and has heretofore adopted a resolution making appropriations for conducting the city of Fulton government for the fiscal year 2001. Whereas the amount of taxes to be levied in the city of Fulton for the city government purposes for the year 2001 has been established in the amount of three million, seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. Therefore, be it resolved that the said sum of three million, seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars for the city government purposes for the year 2001 being the same hereby is directed to be levied and raised by general tax upon all taxable properties according to the valuation on the assessment roll for the current year in accordance with Section C-46 of the city charter of the city of Fulton.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item.
Resolved that the three-year contract between Randano Displays Syracuse, New York, and the city of Fulton for Christmas decorations of the city of Fulton, New York, commencing November 15, 2000, and expiring January 15, 2003 is hereby approved as per attached.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, those are gonna be included, the ones that we've got down there?
Yes.
That look pretty good.
Yes. They dressed up downtown very nicely. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for seal bids in his office, honored before December 19th up to 9:00 a.m. and to be publicly open at 9:15 that same day in the council chambers on the second floor for a timber sale at Gray Bear Farm in accordance with specifications prepared by Fort Can Incorporated. Whereas bids were opened and read as follows. Black Creek Lumber, fifteen thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Frank Pitcher Logging, thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Clary Logging, sixteen thousand, four-hundred dollars. Kuchar Logging, eighteen thousand, one-hundred dollars. CNY Logging, fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Whereas Fort Can Incorporated, by their letter dated December 19th, has recommended that the bid be awarded to Kuchar Logging in the amount of eighteen thousand, one-hundred dollars. Whereas the common council would agree with the recommendation, now therefore be resolved that bid of Kuchar in the amount of eighteen thousand, one-hundred dollars is hereby accepted and awarded to Kuchar Logging.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk is authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, January 16th at 7:00 p.m. relative to a zone change request submitted by Community Development Agency for a change of zone from R-2 residential to R-3 residential for their property located at 202 Oak Street for the purpose of constructing the senior housing project called Oak Street Manor.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes, before I... I'd like to make a motion to accept this, but I'd like to say something before this. The zone change of Oak Street School would just be simply that the zone would be changed just for the school property. Outside of that property, there is no change. It's just for that single property. I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the city has been the record owner of the building located at 201, 203, and night of street formerly the Lamp lighter since April 29th, 1994. Whereas said property is in disrepair and in the need of serious renovations, there are no plans by the city to use the property for any purpose. Whereas the city previously advertised this property for sale at public auction and received no bids. Whereas the Swiggle County Opportunities has expressed an interest in purchasing said property, repairing it, and using it for various purposes. Whereas a project intended by Swiggle County Opportunities will be facilitated by being done through the Fulton Community Development Agency because of the availability of CDBG funding. Now, therefore, be it is hereby resolved that this common council hereby finds that said property currently serves no public purpose and a private sale is determined to be in the best interests of the city, such that in accordance with the city code, Section 4-3, said property need not be sold at public auction. And is further resolved that the city hereby agrees to sell said property to Fulton Community Development Agency for one dollar, and the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said sale.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll have to answer that, Your Honor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that subsection 165-58, Schedule 14, of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton entitled Parking Prohibited to All Times, be amended to read as follows. Add name of street, Broadwell Avenue, the west side from Oak Street to Chestnut Street. Add Denishe Place on the west side from Chestnut Street to Cedar Street.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes, I would like to move this, but I'd like to make a statement, please. The no parking at all. I believe we're just gonna try this, see if it works. And we do have a safety issue there. We have snow plowing problems there. We have trash pickup problems there. We've met with the neighborhood of Denishe, and I know we spoke with him and Mayor of possibly in the springtime that we would try to open up some parking spaces down around by the park and by the railroad. So, our main concern right now is safety. So, we would push this to this point and then wait to the springtime and see how this thing works on a trial basis and work it from there. The only other request that I did have is that signs of no parking at all go up there after the holidays, because a lot of those people are gonna have people visiting there.
We can do that. We can do that.
Certainly.
Certainly.
Please.
We can do it this year at the holidays.
Certainly, please.
So that everyone understands what the problem is, this is the first year we've had this problem. We don't know why. Maybe they did something different at the high school this year, but we have plenty of tools on our block. Presently, there are high school students parking there on both sides of the street. We can't get plowed. Our visitors can't park in the street. We have no room whatsoever. The school says they're going to try to help us. We've done surveys during September and October, and during those times, high school has had as many, lowest number, fifty-seven vacant parking spots at the high school.